Do we have any corrections, additions? Except as printed?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Can Marlo?
Just get to identify yourself.
Hi Elaine. Second Elaine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. And we want to welcome Karen to our board. Welcome aboard Karen. It will be nice to have you on the board.
Thank you. Very excited to be here Donna.
We could all go and introduce ourselves to Karen. Karen and I know each other and she can't see me anyways there but does everyone want to introduce themselves to Karen?
Go ahead Bob.
Can't hear Bob.
You muted?
We can't hear Bob. Figure out how to unmute everybody.
So in participant, go to the the menu up top of the participant. There's an unmute all and unmute all.
Okay, I can't find participant yet. My whole screen is your picture Lillian. You're just big and beautiful on my screen.
Whoever speaks is usually on the screen.
Yeah.
No, well it's not.
If you like use your mouse and like toggle up top, you'll see the participant menu.
I have the participant menu but it just shows everybody's name.
Oh no, not the one on the right side. The one above that. There's a menu bar says file and share view audio. This would be a participant. And you can
It won't let me.
Really? Can you just click on Bob's name and see if you can unmute Bob? Click on Bob's name and right click on Bob's name and unmute.
But that's not where you just told me to go, right?
Yeah, because that's the other option. Or maybe if you're not the owner, you can't do that.
Yeah, that must be it. I'm not the owner. But it won't let me unmute Bob. When I click on Bob's picture, it shows me that he's not muted. Bob, can you say something now?
And now he's muted.
Now he's muted though.
Okay.
And now he's unmuted.
Yeah, that's where it was before. That's so weird.
His picture disappeared. There he is.
Yeah, his picture is there but it's not letting me unmute him.
Okay, I dialed this so.
Sorry Bob.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well we'll try to introduce ourselves to Karen now. Who wants to start? Lilly and how about you?
Okay, hi, I'm Lilly and um I've been with the board since last year? Last year, right? Um, I live in East Berlin and uh welcome Karen.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Hi, I'm Elaine Borshelli. Um, I just started my third term on the board. Woo hoo! And um, I know, it's been forever. And it's a great group and I think you'll enjoy working with us and uh we hope to get to know you.
Thank you.
Carol Wells.
Yeah, Carol's on. Oh, good. Anybody else want to identify themselves?
Chris, um are you still there?
Sure, I'm here. Hi, my name is Chris Fasiano. Um, I think I'm towards the end of my second uh term. Can you hear me or?
Yep.
Is that okay? Okay. There's a lot of feedbacks. I wasn't sure if it was me or what but um again, welcome like everybody else and nice to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Bob, um somebody else, uh did I dial this in still?
No, we can't hear him again.
What? Okay Mari, um in my second term on the board, then welcome aboard.
Nice.
Who was that?
Kay Mari.
Oh, hi Kay. I missed it.
Sharon?
Yeah, uh hi, I'm Sharon Powell. Uh honestly, I can't remember how many terms I've been on. I've been on the board 20, 20 years. I really don't know. But Karen, did you live on the corner of Ridgewood Lane?
Yeah, yeah, we lived there for 10 years.
Well, I live on Ridgewood Lane. We were neighbors years ago.
Oh wow! Very cool.
So welcome.
Thank you.
Marlo?
I am I
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi Marlo.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hi.
You know each other, I take it.
Yeah, we do the registration board on the second floor.
Yes, right. Okay. Wonderful.
Did we miss anyone?
Did you get Carol Wells?
Is Carol here?
Her name is here on my participant list.
Carol, are you there?
She doesn't have a microphone by her name, so her audio might not be on.
Well, hopefully we'll see you at our next meeting Karen and we can all introduce ourselves in person again. We're on to librarian's report. Helen?
Okay. I want to welcome Karen. We had a little sit down um a couple of weeks ago. I gave her her board note and told her interesting facts about all of you. No, just kidding. But uh I'm very happy to have
New challenge.
Very happy to have her aboard. Um, we are going gangbusters. Um, I hope you had time to look through the report. I'm sorry it was not sent out until eight but um have been sitting at the front door on mask patrol and room capacity patrol and just being the general Walmart reader so to speak. And um it's been going very well but it it did not give me time to sit at my computer to do my regular work so some people gave me a break today and let me sit down and and get this ready. Uh, did you get a chance to read it and if so, do you have please tell me who you are when you speak so I know.
I'm just really happy about the report. Um, I think even though we had quarantine and everything else going on, there's still a lot of patients that that uh access the library. And um really appreciative that these programs are still going on despite the, you know, the the fact that the state's just reopening. So really thank you to the library for offering these programs. I was at Trivian last week. It was fantastic. Very well done. I did um one of the programs for crafting and I also did the frames for the library. So everything was very engaging. So I applaud you guys for the effort.
Thank you. I'm going to make sure I pass that along. Um, they've been very creative and um our main goal is to keep everybody interested in the library. Uh, even though they can't physically come in the building, we just don't want them to forget about us and hopefully when everything calms down a little bit and we can allow people back we'll um get our regular people back. But yes, they they've been going gangbusters. I'm very proud of them. Thank you for saying. I'll make sure I pass it along. Anything else from the report?
How'd you make out with getting all those 7,000 books back? Are they still trickling in or are they all back?
Oh, they're still trickling in, yeah. And and we knew that we would probably lose some also in um you know, with not being, with not collecting fines and extending due dates as long as we did. We knew that there would be some kind of loss. So it's hard. We can't at this point tell what books were um out when the pandemic started and which ones have been out since we started curbside pickup. So the numbers are a little bit fuzzy. But um they're still coming back like crazy. So we're uh every day um quarantining books. We have to do 72 hours. So that's why we can't meet in the uh big meeting room for a while. And as you know, we can't meet in the boardroom because we'd be right on each other. But the books are coming back and little by little. But they're going out like crazy too. I I don't know if you saw, we did over 1,200 pickups in the month of June. And the people have just been so grateful. So it's been a very good
I'm at the top of the list for grateful. It's kept me safe.
I'm right there with you.
Me too. Did you come in today? Were you in the parking lot of today Elaine?
No, I was there yesterday I think.
Oh, maybe it was yesterday I saw you. When I was sitting at the table, I can see people come up to the
Oh, oh. Hopefully you'd known you were here or what is, wait, I didn't realize. I kind of grabbed my books and left. I
Yeah.
I noticed the door opened and I thought, this is strange. Why is the door opening? I didn't, it didn't
Yeah, yeah, the door opens because the lobby is open. We have some people that just came in to use the pop here. Uh, some people came in to use the express internet. Some people came into the bathroom. So it's it's been um, it's been very fun, very good. And only two people did not have a mask on. One forgot and one wore his, below his mask.
Yeah. That's, I don't understand why they think that's okay.
No droplets come out of their nose, I guess.
He's not going to breathe any in, I guess.
Yeah. As long as he doesn't sneeze, you're okay.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Exactly.
Helen, with the homebound, um do your people need to take any special precautions or is it just drop off like, like?
It's drop and go.
Oh, okay.
It's drop and go and and uh that kills Barbara because she's used to sitting and chatting and takes out their garbage and she's something else. Um, so it kills her just to have to do that. But she's, she knows because she was in the situation herself being homebound that um how badly these people want their books. So she's happy to be back out on the road again. Good. Yeah. Anything else?
What's the next stage of opening? Is there anything? Sat?
Nope. Nope. The governor just postponed phase three. I was kind of waiting to see what was going to happen there. Um, because that would have allowed us to have bigger groups in the meeting rooms and maybe lightened up on a few things but I am, I'm a very cautious person. As you may know, I have a 96-year-old mother and I had to bring her for a COVID test a couple of weeks ago and thank God it was negative but several staff members, not several, a few staff members who are over 65. We have a couple who have very compromised family members. So I am, I am being very cautious. And so far, because we were able to provide these uh extra services, the community has been nice about it. We're going to uh expand a little bit more uh next week and allow people to come in and read a newspaper off by themselves, one person at a time for paper as long as they realize that they're taking it's, I don't want to say it's it's a risk, but in a way it is. You know, we want them to wash their hands before and after they look at the paper and to know that maybe somebody touched it um before them. But we have a lot of newspaper requests. So we're going to try to do that next week. And we're talking about resuming uh the notary service as well.
Which service?
Notary.
Delivery service?
Notary.
Oh, notary service.
Notary.
Notary.
Yeah.
Helen, the, do um, does the citizen have, I have not read the citizen week, but I know people do they have like um, do they post some updates on the notary about what all of you guys are doing? Because it seems like there's still not a lot of people who know. And wouldn't it be nice if um all these groups are more publicized?
It's not for lack of trying Lilly and unfortunately um we send in stuff all the time and it depends if they have room, what's important to them that week. It's totally out of our hands once we send it. We have been lucky. We had a nice story in the community section of the Hartford Current last week. So that was good. And um the New Britain Herald also did a story on us. Our own hometown paper didn't but we got the the New Britain Herald and the Hartford.
The Hartford.
Yeah. So we're trying, you know, we do a lot of social media and um use our sandwich book outside and it's just, it's hard. You know, I would love to speak to groups in person but nobody's meeting and uh I, I, um, it's pretty Obama, somebody's Zoom meeting but I can't do that. I, I'm open to suggestion. I really am.
Well, I think people realize that it's the same all over. Whether you want to go to a lawyer or a doctor or wherever. There's a lot of precautions and a lot of things still not open and you know, it's not the library's fault by any means, any means. So people should be cognizant of that.
Exactly. Yeah. But if you have any ideas, pass them along or talk it up. You know, one way you could help us um if you're on Facebook is to like as many of your listings as you can. And that gets the word out a little bit further also. So I I noticed that a few of you have put comments on things and I appreciate that. So we even had a little issue with a woman from New Britain who was a little bit perturbed that her child could not come in and browse for books and couldn't wear a mask and didn't want curbside service and and then we found out she was actually from New Britain. So you know what I wanted to say to her, but I, I did not.
Look at your own library.
Yeah, yeah. But um
Last month you said I
Go ahead Donna, sorry.
Last month I think you said Windsor was the only library opening up. Did they open?
They did open and a couple others did too. Manchester opened, um Bristol. Just checking who's open in our area. I think Plainville might be uh open. But everybody's definition of open is different. You know, Plainville said they're going to be open but I believe they're just doing curbside service too. So um, I don't know who is fully open besides Windsor and Manchester. Oh, Enfield. Enfield is open as well.
Interesting, okay.
New Britain, New Britain did open um but they are not letting people in their children's department, I believe. So every, everybody's, everybody's different, you know. It depends on what the health districts say and and what the town governments are saying. That's what we're going by.
Have you gotten any push from um town hall?
Nope. Nope, not at all.
You know what? You're doing the safe thing. So not only are you protecting your staff, you're also protecting your citizens. So I think it's really great, Helen.
Oh, thanks Karen. I, I wish they thought of it that way. But they all do. Anything else I can uh explain from the report?
Uh Helen? Does anyone have any?
Helen?
Yes.
Helen, this is Carol Wells.
Hi Carol.
Hi Carol.
I, I finally got on. It was a big hassle. But um how is the crane project going? I, I missed the first part of the meeting so I don't know if we discussed that already, but the origami, origami.
Yep, I didn't discuss it yet. Um, they had
Oh, okay.
They had pre-made um over 30 kits and they're all spoken for already. So they're scrambling to buy more origami paper and um fulfill the rest of the requests for the project. Well, I think it's going better than they expected it to go. And the storytelling program I think is next week. Uh, so that should tie it all in together.
Okay. Do we have the books that the, the little girl's story? Do we have a children's book? It's called, what is it called?
Uh, Sedaco. Sedaco of Cranes. Yeah, I, I believe we should. Um, it's, it, I consider it a classic children's book. So I
Okay.
We have it, yeah.
Okay, because our, our church is going to participate in this. We're going to be making cranes and stuff. So so we will write the children's book so we can present it and stuff and um so uh, so I, I think our, our children's director is going to want to borrow the book or whatever if she can.
Okay, well, well you know, Carol, you have a special in so um I'm going to do my best to get you the book.
Okay, fine. All right, I'll let her know. Thank you Helen.
You're welcome. Oh, Lillian, that's a nice crane.
Oh.
I made my own because I have origami paper. I don't know if you knew but um, and I was talking to Anna about it, but I think it's before your time. The big um, where the, the library where you have all the, the displays.
Yes.
I think maybe 2013 or so, the display, origami Santa Claus and origami reindeer.
Oh.
Yeah, and I did that.
Wow.
Yeah, I did the, I did the display.
That's awesome. So you, you don't need any tutoring. You could probably teach it.
No, and I won't. I can't like demonstrate and teach stuff. I just do it.
Yeah, yeah.
That was when Racing Berlin was doing the display. When Racing Berlin was um was the uh, you know, partner with the library. So
Right, right, yeah.
I did, I did the origami Santa and reindeer.
So you're going to bring some cranes in for us?
I already did. Anna has it.
Okay, wonderful. Wonderful. How about your children? Are they picking them too?
No, I did the whole, I did ten for all of us. I kept one. I might do the bigger ones. I might do this because it's um, it's like with print, so I might do
Yeah, it's very pretty. Thank you.
Helen, how's the caregiver support group going? Have they been able to meet and get going?
They did meet. Um, they, they met virtually. I can't remember how many um signed up because we don't take the signups for that Elaine. They have call the um uh person who runs the group to sign up. So I'm not quite sure, but she said to, please, oh, wait a minute. That's the one that only had um we had a, they had a few signed up but only one actually um phoned in for the meeting. But the person who runs the group said, please uh keep advertising it because the person who did take advantage of it last month was very impressed and got a lot out of it and said she was going to call other people. So we're
Good, good.
We're going to keep it going. And the program we did with the social worker, um six people had picked up for that uh but three called in and they also were very happy that it was there and had a really good discussion. So we're going to keep that going too.
Good.
It's going to take a while to build up, especially virtually, but we're going to keep at it.
Good.
Yeah.
Anything else to report?
From me?
Anything from friends?
Um, well they haven't met. They did give me a budget which um as you might expect, it's lower than last year because they haven't had any sales from their book sale and haven't really um tackled any other projects. So no. The answer is no.
Okay, okay. It'd be a good time for them to be working down in the book sale, getting everything organized.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think they have been though, right?
No.
No, okay.
No.
All right.
Oh, Karen lost audio.
Karen lost audio, so. Um, I don't have anything for the chairman's report.
Okay, and I don't think
So I guess we would
Subcommittees either.
The subcommittees, I don't think. We'll just ask quick, governance, anything?
Uh, nothing for governance.
Finance and foundation?
Nothing.
Outreach?
Nothing.
How about seeds? Our, I saw, I think in the report, seeds can be picked up. Have they been going?
Yeah. We, we, we put several out for people that had called in. And when we had our free book cart out front, um I put seeds out there occasionally and they were always so, yes.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Yep.
Well, it's a different year. I mean, when we looked at those statistics, I, when it's budget time next year, I sure hope they don't look at this year's statistics, you know?
Well, I think we'd have enough, I think we'd have enough people to speak up and um say that of everything that happened, we were still there for them. So
Yeah.
I'm not too, too worried. Just a little worried.
It's just uh whoever thought, right?
Right, right.
Do you have any communications Helen?
Um, I have not received anything. Um, the remarks that people have made, I tried to put in the report so that you all see them. So no, I, I have nothing in writing to report.
Okay, I haven't had anything. Um, I haven't been able to get in to see our mailbox. So I assume that there probably maybe isn't anything. But we can go on to old uh business. Breakfast for the staff the week of the 20th?
Yeah, you had mentioned that you wanted to uh something for the staff. Um, and I think breakfast is a nice uh idea. And I looked, uh, we have to log in all of our vacation time on a special calendar. And I, I looked at it and the week of July 20th, um, nobody's on vacation, which I'm shocked. And most people are in, uh, most staff members are in in the morning. Most staff members are in in the morning on Tuesdays or Wednesdays. So those would be good days. But no, that's totally up to you. I'm just doing some of your legwork for you.
What time is a good time?
Some of us get there at 8:30. So we could, you know, help you set up or let you in or whatever you want to happen. But people have been... You know, we kind of changed our hours a little bit during this time since we're not open in the evenings. Although that's changing this week. We are going to be open until seven on Thursdays starting this week. So we are there at nine o'clock, but we're working right away at nine o'clock. So we do it in shifts. But it would be... I think they would really appreciate it.
Okay. One of the things I had thought of, if anyone has anything they want to add. But they sell nice trays with like muffins and just a whole nice assortment of breakfast foods. So it's the kind of thing they can take and bring to their desk. I used to do them for business when I was on the road and people always liked those. Does anyone want to make anything? I don't know. Are people nervous to be making things?
Donna, Carol Wells, I would think so, but I'm away that week. I'm on vacation that week. I won't be here around.
Okay, okay. I thought the trays are very nice. They serve a lot of people. How many people? How many staffs?
Well, everybody is about 18, but we're not all in every day.
Okay, okay. Well, let's plan on Wednesday, the 20th, the 22nd, that is, if that's good.
Okay.
July? Is that July?
Yes.
July 22nd, yes.
Okay.
Donna?
Hello, yes.
I lost audio, so I'm talking on my phone. Tell me what's happening on the 22nd, please, and what do you need?
We're bringing in a breakfast for the staff, just as a thank you. My original idea had been getting one of the trays that has a nice assortment of muffins and I think mini bagels. And, you know, they have a nice assortment of finger foods to bring in.
Don't give me a big world. Give me a little world. Don't give me a big world.
What does... I can't hear someone.
Oh, okay. Donna, I think that's a nice idea. I think it meets a lot of needs and a lot of different types of food. I think that would serve well, you know, for a tray like that.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So if anyone has any other ideas, give me a call. Otherwise, we'll plan on that for the 20th. I can pick it up and bring it. If anyone has any other suggestions, yes.
Donna, how about some mixed fruit or something like that?
I'm trying to think. That certainly would be nice. And we probably could get a nice fruit bowl from Stop &amp; Shop.
Right. I think it would be appreciated. I do have a gluten-free person on staff and a vegan on staff. So I know we can't plan a whole thing around them, but they wouldn't be able to eat... Well, he could eat, I think, muffins. But Carrie is... She's celiac, so she can't have any bread and stuff like that. So I think she would appreciate fruit.
Okay. Do you want me to keep that up, Donna? I could order something and bring it?
Sure, if you would like to. That's great.
And what time does it need to be brought to the library?
Mine is...
Eight thirty to nine?
Yeah, between eight thirty and nine, I will be there. I will be there.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any other suggestions?
Donna, are we going to chip in for all this?
The next meeting, we can... Bring your receipt, Karen. Then we can either... I mean, I don't mind donating the tray. I don't mind donating the tray. But if people want to chip in, that's certainly very nice. Okay, okay. Well, the next live meeting that we have, somewhere down the road. And if anyone else has any other idea, you know, even after this meeting, if you think of it, you can email and let us know. I know some people are kind of... And the reason I'm suggesting buying it is because I love to bake. But, you know, people might be more comfortable eating something from... that's made professionally than made from someone's house. I might even be like that myself during this virus thing, you know? So...
I wouldn't mind baking something, but I, you know, I think maybe they would feel better if we got it, you know, from a store or something.
Yeah, I think so. You know, a lot of people aren't eating out at all, not even doing takeout. You know, different ones I know aren't even doing takeout because they're just not comfortable doing that. We didn't in March, April, beginning of May, and we have a few times since then. But we were cautious at the beginning. So, okay, sounds good. If anyone comes up with any other ideas, please, please call or email.
Great, thank you so much.
And then I guess that brings us to new business.
Well, can I just add one more? I don't know. I guess this is new business. This is Sharon. I have to tell you, Helen, that dinosaur was amazing. I loved it.
That was fun.
Oh, thank you, thank you. It was weird how that came about. The... Our custodian, the one that did the other video with me, who pretended he was cleaning me, I don't know if you saw that video, but when we were first announcing that we were closing, we made a little video and he's up for everything. So he found out that we had access to this dinosaur costume and we're talking about a little skit. And he said, "I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it." He even came up with some of the ideas about the dancing skeleton at the end. So I wrote up something real quick and gathered up a few people, few reluctant people, but they find it hard to say no to me. So we put it together. And then Channel 3 picked it up off of our Facebook page. They showed it on the news last week. I didn't even know about it. I never saw the story, but it was on Channel 3 in the four o'clock hour and in the five o'clock hour. I never saw it, but I kept getting messages on my phone. "Oh, it just said it on TV." So it's very...
Does everybody... Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no. I was just going to say...
Does everybody on the board know what we're talking about?
Oh, yes.
Everyone saw?
Oh, yeah. No, I didn't see it.
Who said that?
I'm sorry. I have to leave the meeting. I have another... I have three meetings tonight and I have another meeting I've got to go to. So I'll see you next time, okay? Bye-bye.
Bye, Carol. Bye.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bye.
Bye.
Helen, the thing that caught my attention was even though the information was for the library in general, but kids would be so attracted to this dinosaur, which kind of would lead them into their library and everything. It was very subtle, but I thought it was perfect to bring the kids in a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. That was my thought because then the whole family could watch it and get something out of it. So...
And the music and the way you did it, I was mesmerized. Very nice.
Well, thank you, thank you. We found free music online and Andrea, who's our digital services librarian, edited it together to make the clip flow pretty well. So it was fun. It was fun to do. So thank you.
It was fun.
We're actually thinking of using the dinosaur costume again when we reopen. The woman who owns the costume is Barbara Ritchie, who does our homebound deliveries. And she let us borrow it, although I think you sweat so much wearing it. I don't know if she wants it back after Brett walks. I want to buy her a new one. But we thought she'd like to wear it and stand at the end of the street and kind of wave people in when we decide what we're going to do for the grand opening or when we're going to have a grand opening. So that's one idea, if I can start for nine on the agenda that way.
Okay, that's a good idea. Well, hopefully it will be sooner rather than later, but I don't know.
I don't know either. I don't know either.
Every day we hear something different and, you know... We don't want to do it too quickly and have repercussions.
Well, that's for sure. But if anybody else has ideas for what we can do to make that day special, I'd rather start talking and planning it now than, okay, well, in two weeks we're going to open and then we have nothing down the pipe. So I'd put it on the agenda for tonight so that you can think on it and email me some ideas.
Good idea, good idea.
Maybe the outreach committee can be a big part of this.
Good idea, good idea.
Yeah.
What was that idea?
To have the outreach committee.
It could be fun.
Oh, yes.
You don't have to wear costumes.
That might be better.
You don't want people to see you?
You have to dance, though.
I can move because then nobody will know who it was. So that would be better.
I hope it's soon. I hope it's soon.
A lot of people have said that, but we will see.
Yeah.
So please, you know, think on it. Let me know some ideas. I think we're going to have to rewrite some policies for wearing masks and social distancing and things like that so that we can cover ourselves once we do something. So I will be working on that and talking to the governance committee about that.
Okay. Well, people will understand because it's everywhere you go in public, you're wearing masks. So there shouldn't be any negative feedback on it because that's what everybody's doing. And I think the masks are here to stay for a while.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Yep.
You know? It's the new... It's the new way.
I think they've been seeing the vaccine, so it could be long term.
Who said that? I didn't, I didn't.
It was Karen. I thought it was that. I doubt we're going to see masks or lens without vaccine.
Yeah, true. I keep forgetting there's going to be a vaccine, but that would be good. We have some libraries that aren't...
Can't hear you.
Some libraries aren't opening until there's a vaccine.
Interesting. That, I mean, to think that in four or six months they'll have a vaccine that's been vetted and have clinical trials, I think that's very lofty thinking.
Yeah.
I agree.
Usually it takes 18 months, two years. They say the quickest one was polio and it took four years. So, you know...
Yeah.
There's nothing else than a vaccine coming out that didn't do the job or created more problems.
Yeah. Even with that one, if there's a treatment protocol, you know, it gives us a bit more... Even if there's no vaccine. Like if there is something that would work for a treatment, that would be also good.
Sure would.
Yeah.
It would be, it would be. Well, is there any other new business?
I don't think so. Not on... And we're just going with the flow right now.
Well, thank you for everything the library is doing and you. And we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Sharon. So moved. I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
In a second?
Second.
Karen?
All in favor?
Hey.
And just a reminder that August is our month off from having a meeting.
Yeah.
So unless there's major things going on, Helen, that you feel that we do need to have a meeting, I'm sure everyone would be willing if all of a sudden we're going to be opening up and you have questions and whatever. But if not, in lieu of that, August is our month that we take off and then September would be the next meeting. And the second, it would be the ninth of September, would be the second Wednesday.
Okay. Sounds good. Hop in the lobby.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Stay healthy.
Thank you for helping me before. I forgot to say... But thank you for that.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Marla, you all set? Guess everybody's gone.